Eric has to take the minutes.
That's why I'm recording. I can pass it off to Jason.
Good evening. We'll call the Wednesday, June 8th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting to order at 7:00 PM here. And we'll start off with roll call.
Steve taking Lake Enchantment Trail.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson, Weddell Drive.
Linda Winslow, Norwood Street.
And Eric Power, Staff Planner.
Approval of the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I would like to note a couple of additional items that were left at your stations there. Minutes from the last meeting, May 25, as well as an additional letter, public comment letter for item 6A.
Oh, and just for the record, Denny is excused. He had to go help out his sister in Illinois, I think it is. Okay, motion?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Minutes from previous meeting, May 25th, 2022.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the previous meeting of May 25.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Okay, a public comment. Anyone wishing to speak now instead of onto agenda items is welcome to do so at this time, or if you'd like to wait for the agenda items, you can wait till then. So seeing no one, we will move on to new business and open the public hearing at 7:03 for the special use public hearing number 060822-1. Proposed short-term rental to be located on a property at 2540 County Road 550 in Marquette, within the zone rural residential district. The applicant is Nicole Hizero, 2540 County Road 550. Eric?
Yep, so we have received a complete application for, special use permit application for a special use permit for a short-term rental at 2540 County Road 550. As Chairman Johnson said, the subject parcel is in the rural residential zone district. Surrounding zoning districts to the subject parcel include rural residential both to the east and west. There is a slight mistake in your staff report. It is not resource production to the south across 550. That is forest recreation to the south, and to the north is obviously Lake Superior. Neighbors within 300 feet of the subject property have been notified, as well as a notice in the Mining Journal was placed. Fees for the special use permit application have been paid. Additional information regarding the project is in your packet, and the applicant was made aware of the potential property tax implications as a result of renting the property. The applicant does notify, or convey in their narrative that they plan to continue living, residing at the property and would rent out the property as they are traveling out of the area, so. I don't have anything else really, nothing else really stuck out to me as far as being odd or anything like that compared to some of the other short-term rental requests that we have received. The applicants are here to answer any questions. I would invite them to come up and speak if they have anything they would like to say at this point. Otherwise, I would encourage you to open the public hearing.
Okay, anyone wishing to speak, please come up and state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Hizero. I'm the applicant for this permit, and my neighbors are here, some of them, so I would just like to give them an opportunity to share their concerns, and then I would reserve my comments for after so that I can address any concerns that they have and hopefully for them.
I have some, I did not.
And I, yeah, I would ask that names and addresses be stated for the record.
Hi, I'm Lisa Plasko. I'm here with my husband, John, and we recently purchased an adjoining property at 2546 County Road 550, right next to an pool. We've enjoyed being neighbors with. I have typed out a letter and some pictures here. I probably don't have copies for all you guys, but you guys can kind of, I'm going to read what's on that letter, but there's two different pictures here as well. So this letter and this, my presence here is just in response to that proposed short-term rental property. We reside, like I said, 2546 County Road 550, which is a neighboring property. We appreciate having input on this proposal. Our family purchased our property, our home, in November of 2021. One of the reasons we purchased this property is the small environment and safe, small neighborhood and safe environment. We enjoy having a pool as our neighbor, and we did bring our concerns to her prior to this meeting. And we have many concerns. Some of them are highlighted in this letter. First of all, of course, is the safety of our children. We have four children who live with us. A short-term rental would dramatically affect the environment in which we live. Our property does consist of five separate buildings, which lie very close to Nicole's buildings. One of the buildings, it's a separate building, it's our children's play space, which is just a few feet actually from the property line and Nicole's home. We don't feel the children would be able to continue to use this building. It does have its own entrance, you know, due to maybe safety concerns. The building has a separate entrance close to the short-term rental property and driveway. There would be no way to ensure the children's safety in that building. And there is no distinct division of our front yards. Our children do spend the majority of their time outside and on the beach. The beach has existed as a shared space amongst the neighborhood. There is a berm of land on our property in the front, and then beyond that berm of land is the beach, which has no direct flight lines from our home. Short-term renters would be sharing this beach space with our children and the other children in the neighborhood. There's no way to guarantee their safety. Due to the noise of the waves, we cannot hear voices from the beach. We would have no way to be alerted from a sound or noise from a problem that occurred. The driveway for the proposed short-term rental is accessed from our driveway through an easement. You can see the attached photos. The first photo is from the entrance of the drive, and then the second photo is as you're approaching Nicole's drive. Every person who would rent the short-term property would be on our property. The driveway for the short-term rental is not clearly visible, and looking at the photos, you can see our home is the only visible property. Many of the short-term renters would naturally assume our property is what they're renting. A short-term property rental should have their own driveway and access. Currently, the short-term rental proposed property uses our well as their water source. The well is located under our home. Our water pressure does run low. Like, we can only shower, like, someone can't flush a toilet when someone's showering because it does reduce the water pressure in our home. We do not mind sharing our well with Nicole, but we do, sharing our well with a short-term rental property really would not be feasible. The current property divisions, as you can see from the diagram, you know, are so-called spaghetti lots. This type of lot division is not acceptable or legal by today's standards. The lots have extremely close proximity to neighboring buildings and are not suitable for short-term rental properties. There has been no recent survey of these lots and land. There are no clear lot lines. Safety of the neighboring properties would be an issue. Currently, all the neighbors have paddleboards, surfboards, kayaks, portable fire pits, furniture on the beach. It's not reasonable to carry these items back and forth from the beach every time you want to use them. There is no easy way to security to prevent theft. To ensure the safety of our children and property, we would need to install a security system and upgrade the security of our buildings. This is an unfair expense to impose on surrounding property members. A common complaint from neighbors of short-term rental properties is noise disturbances. I'm a nurse at the hospital who works ferrying ships and takes call at night. My husband also works the marriety of ships. Due to the close proximity of our home with a short-term rental property, we would be greatly affected. A short-term rental property should have a barrier to neighbors who would pay for a long-expense privacy fence to be installed. It is only fair to protect the neighbors from someone who is profiting from strangers coming and going, who is liable for our safety and property concerns. If the short-term rental is approved despite objections from the surrounding property owners, we are requesting a letter from the township and from the property owner stating approval despite objection and accountability for this decision. Accountability needs to be part of approving the short-term rental. In our opinion, there are just too many risks approving this short-term rental. Really, the only benefit is profit. It's unfair to impose the current property owners to all the negative aspects, risks and expenses we would incur at the result of a neighbor property starting a short-term rental. We as homeowners and the township as our government feel we have the responsibility to protect our children and our property. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions about anything I brought up?
Oh, the well, the well is a shared well?
Correct.
Is there any intention of putting a private well, your own well?
No. It, when I first, I rented my home for two years before I purchased it, about six years ago, so I've been there for about eight years. And when I first moved in, Jim Luke, his daughters are here today, told me that the well is an artesian well, and that he just got really lucky the first drill that they hit an artesian well, which he explained to me that that means there is so much force of water that they don't require a well pump. And so in that house, they don't have a well pump. He just has a dial, he explained, that he can turn the water pressure up or down. It's a valve that controls the water pressure. So, well, there's, he had told me that if he has it up too high, that the water pressure is just insane and uncomfortable to shower in.
Wow, we'd love to know where that valve is, because we, we've had our home serviced. We've had a couple different, there's a dial blocking valve.
Let's, let's, excuse me, excuse me. Let's, we need everything on record here, so if you want to speak, you're going to have to come up here and give your, your name and address. Every time, not, not speaking from there, please.
No, my fault, I need to ask that question.
Right, but, and just to get on the record, so Jason, everybody else knows what's going on, we, we need to have it on there.
So that's what I was advised, it was an artesian well, and that's the only information that I have about that. I do have a well pump under my house that pulls from the well, but it's just a very small little giant brand well, well pump that's under there. I, the whole time that I had lived next to Jim Luke, I had never known of any type of issue with water pressure.
Do you have a legal right to use that well?
What's that?
Do you have a legal right to use that well?
Yes, it's, it's actually on the, when, when Jim Luke first listed it with the broker service, like Northern Michigan Broker Service or something on 41, we went through that same company to do the paperwork when I purchased it from the guy I bought it from, Mike Miley Lannister. And they had the old initial listing of the property that Jim Luke went in and drew, drew up, and it lists the well on there. And as far as the easement goes as well, that is listed on my deed.
Easement for the driveway?
Correct. And just last, I think it was last year, there was some repairs done to the driveway in which I paid my portion of, I think it was like four, oh, I'm sorry, $745 or something to that effect.
So, am I correct, and there is, was no survey done when you purchased the property?
Correct. There was no survey done when I purchased the property. There was no survey on record with the township. When I purchased the property, there was no record whatsoever of a, of the septic system. I think that there were just some houses that were built, and there was not, the township or the county, when I went to get the records, they said that there just wasn't, didn't appear that the permits were pulled the way that they should have been, and there was never any drawing or sketch or anything of where the septic was. And then when I went to get my foster care license, it was the same thing with the well. They couldn't find where the well was on the neighboring property. The Plaskos had not moved in yet, they had not purchased the glacier, and so it was empty. And they pulled the sketch for the house at 2546, but when they brought it over and showed the sketch and where the well was located, the sketch was actually the property that I believe to be 2548, because they, the, the sisters who now own that property, that lot with the two rental houses on it, it appeared to be one of those houses with a lockout basement, so. So there's just some confusion back there. I've been working with Mike Molesky, I believe is his last name. Last hearing that we had, Jason was here and gave me his phone number, and so Jason has been in contact with the title company, Trans Nation, and they are working to get a new write-up for the, the survey to do. I, I requested both a sketch and a full survey, which I would, you know, respectfully, I would request that the, the permit be given with the contingencies, as we spoke about last time, that I would, you know, have that done and provide it to you as soon as it becomes available. But Mike is actively working with them on that.
Did you provide this legal description? Or did we, did you, did we get that from the office, Eric?
No, that, that's the legal description that was provided in your application.
Yes.
So is that 82 feet of frontage that you have on the lake?
I'm supposed to have 100 feet of frontage, is what was listed on that initial realtor, the MLS, I believe it's called. I've been in communication with Mike, and he, I told him how it's mentioned about wagon road on that description. That wagon road is actually the driveway, from my understanding, and, and after having conversations with Nancy Peterson, who is here today, one of the sisters. So in looking at that, I do not believe that that legal description is accurate, so.
It's really confusing.
Correct. That, and that's why Mike said, remember how I told you last month that two people that I had tried to hire for the survey said that they just don't even see how there's a starting point, that the way it was written up is so off that they just didn't even think they could do it. So Mike is working to get the descriptions of the neighboring properties so that we can have a starting point.
Well, from what I'm looking on here, I don't know, Steve, you've looked at more of these than I have, but one side is 500 feet and the other side is 100 feet, from what I'm reading.
Yeah, well, what I'm seeing is that they're, they're calling the, they start at the intersection of Centerline existing wagon road and County Road 550, so I'm assuming that's Eagle's Nest Road that they're talking about there, wagon road, because then they go along the wagon road in northeastward direction, the shore of this here, intersection located a quarter mile southwest with railroad crossing on the Eagle's Nest, then running northeastward in a straight line of distance of 500 feet to the midpoint of the same road. Said line extended to the shore of Lake Superior, against right angles, southeasterly in a straight line of 82 feet to the point of beginning of the parcel that they're talking about here. Then at right angles to the line established last, describes southwestern, a straight line to the centerline is Cacot Road, 100 feet in right angles. Yeah, I'd say it looks like, saying that she has about 100 feet of frontage on the road, but it's a, it's a wicked area of survey up there because there's no sectional ties, none at all. So, you know, I think that if the other, that the other parcels nearby have, have descriptions that are based on corner corners, section corners, that kind of stuff, then I think it'd probably be relatively easy to try to define what her parcel is. The other thing that would be, her parcel would be what their parcels aren't in a description too, so, you know, I, I, but I find it a little bit curious that when they're selling half-million-dollar parcels out there, that they're working with a description like this, and then a bank would approve mortgages like that. That's, that's a scary thing for a bank, I would imagine, to, to have something purchased without a mortgage survey to ascertain if the parcel actually has the home on it that you're mortgaging, so. It could be, it'd be an interesting project for Mr. Molesky. I surveyed with him a long time ago, so, he does a great job, I know. I've actually, I've done some surveys north, further north on this area out there, and it's, it's a sticky with it out there.
For sure, and I, I told him, no matter what direction this goes, that I am definitely going to follow through with that so that, you know, when I pass and my son inherits it, or, you know, then no one has to, to deal with that. But that was the same description that we just used from the land contract, because the gentleman that I bought it from, his name is Burl Jordan, he had bought it on land contract, on land contract from Jim Luke. And so that is the same property description. I don't know if there was ever another one before that. I don't think so, because I think it was all one big chunk of land, and then he, you know, agreed to that to sell that off.
Are those lots all supposed to be equal width? Kind of look like it to me.
It does kind of look like it. These are the ones that are part of, part of the shores, so they definitely have, the ones on the lakeside have larger lots. And then, you know, on the backside, so you can see it's a little bit larger than these. But I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not even sure who lives or owns the property on the other. I think it's kind of undeveloped. And then there's public beach down there, like what we had talked about, Eric, at the, the water runoff, I think that's what they call it. So there's public beach there, and there is public beach, of course, at the rec area. And so we do get a lot of people that, that walk by down the beach from one public beach to the next.
I disagree with that statement.
Okay, well, I.
And I would speak on that statement.
You can come up here.
People are walking by, people's, people from Eagle's Nest come down through because they, they have rocky shoreline, and so they come to the sand beach to walk, but that's my opinion.
Okay, thanks for now. I'm sure, I said, thanks for now, I'm sure you'll be back. Okay, who's next?
I'd just like to clarify something. My name is Deb Edrich. I reside in Ontrain, Michigan, but I do own two of the homes at 2548 County Road 550. We have had this property in our family for more than 70 years. So when we're talking about property lines and things, everything in its day was done with a handshake. The well was dug by my dad, and the person that lived in the house or built the house next door that is now owned by Nicole was a very good friend of his. And so one well was dug, handshake, you can tap off of my well, and that's how it went. So that well does belong to the 2546 home. There is no deed to anyone else. That well belongs to that home. That is what we've always been told. As far as being able to shut off the water, we could shut off the water, but we can't control pressure. There, there's, there's two handles down below, and we use, every winter, we use it to close off some of the buildings, the sauna and all of that. So we would go down there and we would shut that water off. There are two handles down there. I'm assuming one goes to Nicole's, the other one is to our home. And this, as I said, was done on a handshake. So if you're going to be looking for anything written in a deed, it's not going to be there because 70 years ago, people did things differently.
I'm confused, I thought the well was in their home.
It is. I say our home, we just sold that home to them in November.
Oh, okay, so you can't shut the water off.
No, we can't shut it off.
No, you, you.
I can, but I can't.
Okay, 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 okay. I was curious.
No, I'm sorry. It's been our home for so long, and it's been our summer home for so many years, and now we are going to enjoy the homes that are left up there until, who knows when. But as far as the well goes, yes, John and Lisa have control of that. That is their home. That is the well that was dug before that home was built on it. So, you know, I, I can't see how someone can say it's deeded to them if it's not under their house. It's, it's a well, and it belongs to 2546. So I, I think that as far as looking up property lines, I believe that Nicole has 100 feet, Lisa and John have 82 feet, and we have 100 feet. How that came about, we always thought it was three 100-foot lots, but somehow the 2546 ended up with 80 feet. So I guess I'm not sure what else to say other than the fact that you, you can hire somebody to do whatever they want to do for property lines, but that means they're going to have to reestablish, reestablish property lines, which means they could take 10 feet from Nicole's property, or they could take 10 feet from our property to make it suitable. So we sold the property with the property descriptions that were listed in the courthouse, and that's how we got all the property descriptions was through the courthouse.
As far as surveyors taking property.
Didn't do that.
Surveyors don't take property from one person to another. We have no judicial ability to do that. All we, all we can do is what's per deed. We can't say, well, you know, she should have got 10 feet. That's, that's not what a surveyor does.
That, I'm sure, I understand that, I do understand that, but what I'm trying to say is that if, if you're saying that you cannot figure out because a survey wasn't done, what are you going to do in going there to do that?
What happens then is that it's based on what occupation has been established, all lines, position of homes, dimensions between them, and a lot of times when something like this happens, especially what I'm surprised at is that with, with land contracts and stuff like that, banks don't get involved with mortgages. And then in businesses like this where house values are so incredibly expensive, sooner or later, a bank's going to have an issue with, I would assume, an issue with property like that, that, you know, somebody's house could be over a property line by 10 feet, and all of a sudden, then it's a daisy chain, with the number of lots out there, and then the township has to get involved doing a censors plat and then rectify the situation. So I think that might be something that's coming down the pipe sooner or later because of the values of the property that are out there, you know. Lake Superior frontage is incredibly valuable, so people want to make sure they have exactly what they're getting, and banks are going to want to make sure that they're not going to lose their investment or their, the money they put into it, because all of a sudden, the house that they mortgaged isn't on the property that they mortgaged it on, so. Anyway, that's, that's beside the point of what's going on here, but it's, it's a tough situation, especially when they're long and have lots upstairs.
It is a tough one, and it's a tough one when we discuss about the road, the road coming in. It was listed as a wagon trail road, so you know how long ago that was. It, it was a main road that went directly into my father's property when, years ago, and we've known all of the neighbors that have been in there from not the original one, but from the time we grew up out there, and we lived there every year, all summer long. So that being said, there were different entrances into those properties, and it got changed, and it got changed again. It got changed because my father allowed it. The road that goes into Nicole's is cutting across John and Lisa's property. That, we don't even know if a permit was ever established for that road because Burl Jordan was the owner at the time, and. And unfortunately, he took advantage of my dad many times. And my dad being in his, my mom and dad being in their 80s, you know, it was like, do you see what Burl just did? And, well, tell him. No, it's okay. No, what can I do? And that's how that road got put in that way.
According to this legal description, they do have an access easement from?
Easement.
Well, easement is the road they can drive on.
Correct. But they're not paying the taxes for that road or paying for the upkeep, yes. This is the first time in
70 years.
70 years that anyone has really had the gall to ask for help because we have been paying for the maintenance of that road and now being the family owning the property, we're continuing to pay and now Lisa and John will be paying. Or they pay taxes on that road, they pay for that maintenance.
It's a driveway they use as well, correct?
I'm sorry.
They use, it's a shared drive.
It's used by many, yeah, it's used by many. There are easements to one, two, three, four, four that I know of in that area.
But, yeah, so I don't, you're right, they pay taxes on land that there is an easement over, but that's not an uncommon thing, I mean, that's.
Correct, but I'm just saying that, you know, I mean, we, if we want to say that she had to pay or any, there were four of us that paid for the repair of that road from all the years of being used. So that doesn't lay claim to that's her road.
No, 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 she's not claiming it's her road, she's claiming she has an easement to use it.
She has an easement to come down and cross over to her property.
Correct.
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question while we're on the easement.
Name and address, wait, name and address again, please.
Lisa Plaxco, 2546 County Road 550, Marquette Township. So I have a question on the easement. So, is my, from what I've looked up, it's my understanding that if you have a short-term rental, it's technically Michigan has been ruled a business by the most recent legal proceedings. So does a business have a legal easement to my road?
She does.
Does a business though? Because turning it into a short-term rental, right in the literature that I've read recently in Michigan, has, the court has deeded it as a business.
Would long-term rental be a business still?
No.
No. Is a long-term, short-term rental, does that be classified as a business? Do you know?
I am not aware.
Okay, I don't think that would, because this is a special use permit for that property and if that is granted on here, she does have access to use her parcel as permitted.
So I guess, yeah, that's just something that would need to be clarified.
Right.
And I guess while I'm up here, again, I forgot to mention this the first time, the neighbors on the other side of Nicole live in Moore, Michigan, and they did email their letter to you guys and I have it in print. They also are strongly opposing that short-term rental.
Who's that from?
The Salisbury's. Tom and Amy Salisbury. So you can read their attached letter.
So how long is the role with us, they're talking about the driveway?
Nicole's access to our driveway is 330 feet from County Road 550. So people would be driving 330 feet on our property and so potentially hopefully finding her property.
Is there any meters on the well so you know how much?
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Just again, sorry. I know that I sent a letter.
Name and address again, please.
It's not for us, it's for when they're taking them.
It's recorded, recorded.
And then they'll know who's talking.
This is Deb Dedrick again.
Thank you.
We sent a letter, nothing to mention about.
Could you say your name and address again, please?
I thought I said.
She just did.
Oh, I didn't hear, okay, sorry.
It's okay, but I'll say it again, it's Deb Dedrick from the county. When we first found out about this, I was told, and what is the difference between short-term rental and a VRVO? I would like to know that, is there a difference?
There is not, VRVO is just one of the listing services for short-term rentals.
I understand. You say that you're going to continue to live there, but you haven't been there in how long?
If you're at the podium, you're up there to address the commission and not anybody in the audience.
Okay, how long has she been there? During, from COVID on, I don't think that there's been any, maybe activity once in a while up there, but not living there. Her address is Nagani or Ishfreming, I do not know. She states that she'll continue to live there and then when they go on the road, they'll rent it out, but I can perceive that this is going to be advertised as a short-term rental or a VRVO. And coming from Autrain, you know what Autrain looks like. There are 12 VRVOS, short-term rentals, and one resident. And then it goes on, three more and one. And those are rented year-round, every week. There isn't a, we're going to live there for six months and then we're going to leave for two months and somebody's going to come in and rent it. I never see that happen, so. All I'm saying is that a VRVO or a short-term rental means that you're renting that on weekly, bi-weekly, month, however it is.
90 days or less.
That's what I do. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I just wanted to speak, I'm John Plaxco, 2546 County Road 550, Marquette Township, but I wanted to give you a little rundown of how the property exists. One is the driveway, comes in 330 feet approximately from County Road 550 and it continues straight into our house and to their property as well. Nicole has an easement to take a right and access her property 330 feet in. It is a private road which I maintain and I plow, I mow the yard, I do all that and I'm happy to do it.
Do you plow her part of the driveway also or just yours?
I have, but legally I do not have to. That's up to the easement holder, in my opinion, to maintain. Anything that happens, technically she would have to deal with. It's my property, but I don't have to maintain the easement for Nicole.
And how many feet is her driveway from your driveway over to her place?
It goes the entire property, the width. So it would go from County Road 550 in, across my whole property and into her property. However, if you continue going straight, since it is on my property and it's private road, naturally a guest trying to find or locate this proposed VRVO would have a pretty good chance of trespassing on our property. Now, another thing, as far as the beach is concerned, on both sides of Nicole, we're on one side, the Salisbury's are on the other, and the property goes up until some point where the water is, depending on the level of the water and the legal ease. So she's somewhat landlocked as far as the beach goes, we all are out there. There are public beaches down to the left and to the right, I believe, but as far as, like my wife said, the spaghetti lots, you're kind of landlocked, so it's, it gets tricky too because it is a private beach in front of my house, as is in front of Nicole's house and their properties as well, up into a point. I'm not saying you don't have access because Michigan law states you can walk back and forth next to the water, but you can't reside on a private beach.
So who owns the beach?
I believe the owners of the property. I would only need to be.
Right, what, there's an established water level for like Superior, six, I don't know, I can't give you the footage. So if, for example, your beach comes down and the water level is at the water level that's set by, I don't know, the high water mark. Yeah, the high water mark or average water mark.
Average water mark.
So at that point, if the water is at that point, no one can walk on that beach. Okay? If the water is below that point, they can walk up and down that beach all they want, knowing what that water level is at any given day. But there is a, there is a set level that is set by army corps engineers or some auspices of the Great Lakes. But yeah, as far as a public beach goes, depends on the water level.
Right, but it is not a public beach.
No, it is not a public beach, right, right, right. I mean, not all a beach.
And I guess that's one of our concerns with young children playing on the beach and we have, like my wife said, there's a deck on our property, not on the beach, but up on the berm before the beach, chairs, fire pits, that type of stuff. And again, there's some tricky things if somebody was to trespass and use that or take things, that we would have problems there. I just wanted to let you know a little bit about how the property is. This is actually the road coming out of 550 and you can see the easement that crosses here to Nicole's property. Our house is this house here with all the cement and this would be the property of, well, the Luke family. And that property continued down to that median water mark, so to speak, is what you're talking about. So the Salisbury's would be on one side of Nicole, we're directly on the other. Our home is approximately 50 feet from her dwelling. I mean, it's close, it's not.
It's not even that.
Yeah, I mean, again, I looked up some of the township ordinances and there's things called bumpers that businesses are, come in that they have to maintain and put up, erect for things like noise, privacy, that type of thing. I'm, my house is literally from me to you away. When I look out my window, I see her window. And we're going to have people vacationing right there. And again, there's, it's just a concern. If there is a problem, I will have to address it at the time, but it is a concern. The well is a concern. I feel if you're going to run a business, you should have your own well. The easement, it's an easement. I'm not sure as far as the legal ease about renters accessing it, but Nicole has the right to go through that property and access her property.
Is her driveway completely on her property or on your property?
The easement is on my property. Her driveway takes a hard left and runs parallel up to her property.
So when it splits off, it's on her property?
Correct. And her property goes all the way to?
It goes diagonal across our property.
Right, but then it splits off and goes up to her property.
So part of it is on your property?
Not her driveway, the easement.
Well, same thing, right?
Her driveway, yes.
The driveway.
Not her driveway, the easement. It's our property, our driveway.
Right.
She has an easement, she has access.
So the driveway going to her house, there's, it like splits off like that, so the one going to her house, that's?
That little bit of that split is part of theirs.
82 feet of it is on our property. Then it takes a 90 degree and goes up to her house, that's her property.
So the entire, her entire driveway is on your property?
No.
No.
Probably two thirds of it, I would say.
Two thirds, okay.
Or no, on our property, probably a third, two thirds of it, once you turn, you're on her property and approaches her.
No, it's at least half on ours, I think.
It's kind of complicated.
Well, because we don't have a survey either, so we're guessing.
Yeah.
So you guys didn't get a survey either to purchase?
No.
No.
I guess not, there may be something, I don't know, I would have to.
Well, the banks require a survey.
It was kind of all their.
Obviously, this was.
Jim had all the property there, I'm assuming, right?
Let me tell you this, the banks required me to have my own well on my property to buy the house. In fact, when I came out to learn how to winterize the outbuildings with the Luke family, there was a person underneath my house verifying that we had our own well and the bank would not give us a mortgage if we did not have a well. And there's nothing in our deed that says anything about a well, the easement is in there.
Okay, wow.
It gets tricky and it's located directly under my house. It's the farthest point from her property, it's closer to the Luke property, which their homes that they own have their own water.
Those were all camps, I'm thinking.
Yes.
They were all camps and they were a fun weekend for families.
My house is the original house, their original camp and then the other structures were built.
Lots of easements for roads, that are camps.
It was a family community.
It was Jim Luke and his daughters.
Well, it's a big family. So, but again, the issue here is we're talking about whether or not you meet the requirements for a short-term rental and I think the requirement says they have to have a survey. Does it not say that?
You have to provide.
Provide a survey, right?
There's also a fire code.
Well, wait, but I think that's, that's one of the things I thought.
And without a well, I guess, that is a concern in mind as well.
Yeah, well, the fire, yeah, well, 550 is a concern for the fire department, I mean.
And getting a fire truck down.
Well, we need to keep your driveways right enough for the fire department, that's what I will tell you today because I won't tell you, but that's what I will share today because some of you know that houses burn quickly without, or not, yeah.
What did they say about the survey?
I was, I was sure. It's on our checklist and they need it something.
It does, it does. It says property boundary, survey slash map and legal description.
Yeah.
So I guess either one. With the seal of the registered surveyor who prepared them. So, yeah, I guess you do need one.
Yeah, so I think we have to wait for that to come to make a decision, right?
Well, I think, either way, we'd have to wait to settle this or, you know.
Yeah, so we don't have all the stuff we need.
It's being written down.
How does the process work? Do we have notification prior to approval in case we want to get legal counsel present, that type of thing? I guess how does this rule, how does it roll out? If you need a survey and you get a survey, do you just make a decision then, then do we approach legal counsel?
Well, we can approve, deny, or table it tonight, so.
And you would know all that.
Yeah, you'll be here to take the vote.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we want to do that and that one.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Did you get all of our letters?
There's not a lot of letters.
I think so.
They are included in the record.
Ahead of time.
As long as everyone else is done, I would like to address some of the concerns that you have.
Name and address again, please.
Possibly.
Well, I mean, trust me, when it comes to children's safety. Nicole, I don't have that phone name and address. 2540 County Road 550, Marquette Township. So when it comes to the safety of children, I mean, I just retired from a 26-year career with the Michigan State Police. I was on the road for 18 years and then was a trooper and then was a detective for the last eight. And part of the reason I retired when I did was because I had had enough of being, I was the team lead, I came up here, I opened up and stood up in office for the computer crimes unit and the internet crimes against children task force. So I have got a lot of experience in dealing with sex crimes against kids. I can, you know, I kind of texted John a little bit about that. There's no doubt whatsoever, children being at risk, they are much more at risk with people that they know than people that they don't know. Typically, you know, unless somebody is going to actually abduct a child, there is a whole grooming process that takes place. And, you know, the Plaxco's children, I believe, are all teenagers except for maybe one might be 12, but they're 19, maybe 17 or something, I'm sure they can give you the ages. You know, I would not be doing this if I felt like I would be putting children at risk. I would not be able to live with myself if I felt like I did something that put a child at risk. I dedicated my life to protecting children. As a female in the department, from the time I walked in the door, I was handed, sometimes I would be on past days for two days and they would hold a complaint till I came in. That was my specialty, crimes against children. So, I mean, I just want to say that I would not be doing this if I felt like it was putting the children at risk. I do have somebody that is on standby who runs an Airbnb company. She is a relative of my wife's and my wife also works for an Airbnb company. The complaints that they get are typically from the tenants that are staying in the Airbnb about noise level with neighbors. In my years as a state police trooper and as a detective sergeant, I have never had an issue with a tenant where we, that I have to investigate and I've never even heard of one, other than one time when a tenant discovered child sexual abuse. abuse and material on a computer at an Airbnb. And it actually turned out to be the maintenance guy that worked at the Airbnb fixing things. So, you know, I, that part, I would hope that they would understand that I would not do anything that would put children at risk. As far as noise and stuff goes, I mean, the Airbnb app is pretty slick. It gives you the opportunity to see any previous reviews of tenants that have stayed at other places, most people that use Airbnb frequently. I mean, if they use it at all, they probably used it more than once. I use it very often. I'm always very respectful everywhere that I stay. There's also an option to not allow direct book. So that means if they request a reservation, that doesn't mean that they just get it, that they get to stay there. I can ask a series of questions to basically vet them out about, you know, what, what brings you to town, what are you here for? I can limit the number of guests that are there. The way that we plan to write it up is going to be very much like a quiet retreat on the beach. It's going to detail that there are neighbors and that they would need to be very respectful of the neighbors and their privacy and the noise levels. I can limit the number of cars that they can have on the property, all of that. I mean, it's, it gives the homeowner a lot of control. And I do not plan to just back-to-back-to-back rent this place out. I will be coming up and, you know, I'm not just traveling, but my wife still has two sixteen-year-olds that are in high school. So I spend a lot of time at her home in Sturgeon Bay, Wisconsin. And then I come back whenever I can, because that is my home. All of my, most of my clothes are there, about half my clothes are at her house. All of my furniture and everything is there. I was just up not long ago backpacking in the woods and coming back to a home base. This is my home, so of course, I want to have people in it that are going to respect it. As far as him plowing and stuff, I absolutely appreciate that. We bought them a wonderful gift basket. Because they did that, we went on vacation, bought them souvenirs from our vacation and provided that to them. I would happily pay him money, or I can just employ someone else to plow and mow. You know, I mow whenever I come up, but that's something that, you know, he definitely doesn't have to do. I appreciate it. I have shown my appreciation both verbally and in text and by gifts. And I can certainly get the money as well. Also, to address further, the driveway, when you first enter in, all of this area right here is kind of marshy area that I believe, I don't know for sure, but I believe, I learned from Jim here, that it's kind of protected area. So it's like a marshy area with a lot of wildlife. So the shared driveway comes in during this area. And the part that had to be repaired that we paid for were the culverts, so that the water that is there, the standing water, can pass through those culverts, because there's pretty much your ground standing water in that area. And then, as it comes in, you can see right here, this is where it comes over to mine. So really, there's not a whole lot of activity other than wildlife right in this area. And I certainly plan on, on the Airbnb, you can give clear directions, and I could even mark it off if they were to be kind enough to, let me put a sign to say my address this way where it branches off, because where it does branch off, it is on their property. And I can understand their concern about that, that somebody may drive straight forward. And the only reason I say that is because I've had packages by UPS left at 2546, because they get confused. But I can certainly make sure that they understand by taking pictures or putting a little sign there right where the trees are, deployment arrow, to make sure that they go that way. There are things that I can do to ensure that that doesn't happen. That's, I guess, about all I have to say.
Last time, place of Plaxo, 2546 County Road 550. I think it's very easy to see, there is a time and a place for short-term rentals. This is not the property for a short-term rental. It is not straightforward. It is, it's just, I guess, I just want it to be known that, you know, at this point, we would, the rest of the neighboring community would prefer to just have this denying and move on from here, to not keep this ongoing process going. We like having Nicole as a neighbor, this is nothing against her. It's just this property is not a property that should be used as a short-term rental. I think it's very easy to see, it's not set up for it. It wouldn't meet any legal standards by today's for a short-term rental. If you went by legal standards, there's no way that my kid's structures at our home would meet legal distance from a property line that should be near business. I'm just asking that request. And again, I wanna emphasize that last line, that if you, if this is gone forward with, A, we want the right to legal counsel, and B, we want letters saying that you approved this despite objection and have some accountability.
My name is Nancy Peterson, 339 Mulcher Street, Marquette. And along with the two neighbors on both sides, excuse me, I am not a public speaker. We have forty-five grandchildren between the five girls. And we will be taking and going up there. We don't, we've never had to look and watch the kids except for going up there and making sure they're not near the water and drowning. We don't want to look for strangers. So, that's all I can say. We're, we're very disappointed in Nicole, that she would do something like this to our neighborhood. So that's all I have to say.
Again, I apologize. This is Nicole Heiser, 2540 County Road 550, Marquette Township. I don't wanna take up much more of your time, this is going on quite long. You know, with the, I don't wanna just try to rebut everything that was said, because I care about these people here. But I will say as far as like the water usage goes, in two years, after my wife's children go on to college like their older brother, we're gonna be living there full-time again. If I'm in the doghouse, I might be there for a week or so. But while I'm there full-time, we're gonna be using up a lot more water than somebody staying there for three days, leaving, me coming there to clean it and stay there for a few days and then leaving and maybe having somebody else there. Like I said, it's not anything that's gonna be back-to-back-to-back. It's something that will just, you know, I'm retired now, I'm on my sixth income, and I'm paying for this property that I love and is my home. And I plan to stay there for the remainder of my retirement after those two years. And, you know, I feel like it's within my right as a property owner to maybe make a little bit of money. What I don't wanna do is have somebody sign a one-year lease. And who knows how that person's habits are going to be? And if they don't like having that person as a neighbor, now we're locked in for a year. And that's a concern. And for me, then I cannot come there every couple weeks or so and spend time at my place that I'm paying for also. You know, in just the eight years that I've been there, everything has changed quite a bit. I mean, Marcia and I have had numerous conversations about that, how it's so different from how it used to be with all the new lots coming in. Prior to just the, you know, somebody having a new house built further down that was renting the second house on the lot that Luke still owned, you know, they had, had two little children be born while they were there. And then the Plaxos and the Salisbury's, there were no children other than the grandchildren visiting. There were no children that lived out there at all. And, you know, with other people coming, there's tents being set up right on the edge of the high watermark, you know, and, and stuff left on the beach even after nightfall, like just consistently left down there. It has changed, the area. Man, it was great when I was living there. And I, for years, after Jim Luke passed, that house pretty much stood empty. I didn't have anybody there. The Geparts that were on the other side where the Salisbury lived, they were hardly ever there, because they were snowbirds. And when they weren't there, you, half the time, you didn't even know it. So I had a lot of quiet privacy, and that has very much changed. But that's what happens. Somebody pays money for that property and they own it and they have the right to do what they wanna do within the laws with their property. And I'm trying to do this very by-the-book. I tend to be a by-the-book person. And, you know, like I have professional friends that, that have come up and stayed at my place before while I was there, that now want to come up with their grandchildren and stuff and rent it from me. And I can't legally do that without this permit. And these people, one is a judge, they are professionals, retired troopers, you know, a prosecutor that's a friend of mine from downstate, they want to be able to rent it from me, and I can't do that without this permit. So I'm hoping that they would put a little bit of trust in me, that I would pick and choose the people that I would rent it out to in such a way that everything will be fine. That's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Do you believe that you have a legal right to their water?
I do.
Could you provide that?
Um, well, I mean, like she said with the handshake, when I first met Jim Luke when I moved in there, actually, I talked to him before I rented it. He was part of the reason I signed the lease for that place, because I met him and he was such a charming gentleman, that when he shook my hand, his big mitts just wrapped all the way around my hand and he would invite me in for drinks. And I'm not a drinker, but sometimes I'd go in and talk to him while he would drink. He has a little bar set up in the house, and he just loved to entertain and talk to you. And he just was like, how do you like the water? It's wonderful, isn't it? And would brag about that Artesian well. You know, we're sitting right by Lake Superior and we're on a, all the sand makes for a huge water filter, so it's got really great water quality. We've never had any problem with our water pressure, like I say. And, you know, it would just, I'm afraid it would be worse when we're there all the time. But as far, the only paperwork I sent, like with that, the deed, it mentions the easement, it doesn't mention the well. But at my house, I do have that MLS listing when he first sold it to Burl Jordan, who I leased from, that shows, you know, how it has like the type of heat and everything, and it says well. And in my opinion, and I would be interested in getting feedback from you, if two people put in a well and they have a handshake agreement, and that went on through the, the process of somehow Jim acquiring that place, because she was saying somebody else lived there, I don't know if they rented or owned it, but Jim definitely owned that property and then sold it to Burl Jordan. And there was nothing written in there about the well or anything, and then it changing hands, and, and that house then being sold by the Luks to the Plaxos, does that or does that not grandfather it?
Well, if it's, if it's not written, I don't know if you'd have legal right to it. But then again, if you have use of it for...
I think based on length of time and use and knowledge, and knowledge, that that was being used by, I think, I think she had a fairly good legal understanding.
Our lawyer's listening tonight from our meeting, so I guess, yeah, can't help us out here, but I guess, I guess that's the big sticking point is, you know, if, if they shut the water off and you can't have water there, you wouldn't be able to rent it. So would you, or even use it, would you drill a new well?
Well, I don't know, I would prob, I mean, they're the ones that are bringing up legal counsel. At that point, I would probably bring in legal counsel. And I certainly wouldn't want it to come to that. But, I mean, either way, the place is going to be rented. I mean, I wasn't the first tenant to rent there. There were, I think, at least two tenants that rented from Burl Jordan. And like I said, just on the other side, the Plaxos, they lived there full-time, no question. They lived there for about six months. On the other side of them, it's one lot that has two full houses on it. On the other side of that, I don't know, I don't think anybody lives there at all. The Salisbury's bought their place maybe a year and a half or a year and eight months ago, and they just come up sometimes in the summer, occasionally in the winter. But they mostly, he's got a business downstate. And when I, they first got the letter, they actually called me, or they did call me. They had a real estate agent, the one that sold them the house, call me and asked me if I would be willing to sell my house to them, because they would like to buy it. I said, well, no, that's, that's my home, and it has all my stuff, and the garage is also full of my stuff. And she said, well, they would like to purchase it, so when people come up to visit them, that they can stay in that house. And I said, well, it, it would be available to rent, and because they're my neighbors, I would rent it to them at a very good price. You know, I wouldn't give them the same cost as somebody else. And then they came over and they spoke to me about it, again, about buying it. At that time, they didn't, the only concern that they gave to me was they felt like it would change the, the feel of the beach. Look, anytime you come down to the beach and there's nobody on it as far as you can see, that's a wonderful feeling. But we are stacked in there, one right after the other. And so if I'm there, I'm gonna be at the beach. She's had numerous family members just come up and stay for the weekend or a week. But again, that's the change that comes with it. And when you buy a piece of property located right next to neighbors, you're always gonna have that risk, because this is in a zone that allows this. There are zones in, in, in Marquette Township that do not allow this. However, my house is not in one of those zones.
Well, it doesn't allow it, it allows it by permit, and that's what...
Well, no, I thought that the, what is it, the scenic or something does not allow it. Because when I first looked at the mapping, I wasn't sure where I was at. But mine even allows for a pig farm, it sounds like.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I think we're good for now, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. I'm sitting too long. My name's Marcia Chapman, I'm at Ten Correll Court in Agony Township. I am co-owner of the 2548 County Road 550. I have been friends with Nicole, and we walked the beach, had many, many conversations and wonderful, and some not so wonderful, but Nicole did say that when she first met my dad, how wonderful my father is, and he is absolutely wonderful. He embraced neighbors, and that's what my dad did. And when he had people come in and they did something that was kind of against maybe what he felt, he would say, that's okay, that's a neighbor, and we don't offend neighbors. And I wanna leave that with you there, that that's what my father was. He was all about being a good neighbor. And I am disappointed in all of this, Nicole, because it's not all about the money. My dad could have done all kinds of things in regards to money, but he was all about people and love and family. Thank you.
Anyone else? Nope, all right, we'll close the public meeting at 8:09. Commissioners, Eric, any comments?
I guess first of all, um, I think this is a legal question about the well. And I don't know for, I know we're not qualified to vote. I'm not knowing if there's going to be water on there. I don't know if y'all agree with me or not, but it seems like-
I think there's a few legal questions. I also feel that there's a few questions for Jason about like the business license.
I think the township attorney, not even just Jason, yeah, this is legal.
Right.
If they're talking about getting lawyers, I, I think the township's going to have to be on the right side of the law here, first of all, about what they're going to do with this well situation and easements and-
And survey.
Everything else and-
The whole piece, there's lots of pieces that seem to be not complete.
With the lawyer here last, that we thought we would have a survey. And that we knew she was in touch with the neighbors, and it sounded like everything was in order. But since we had the survey tonight, I wonder why we had it on our agenda still. So Jason, questions?
Well, because it was a public hearing and-
It was scheduled.
It doesn't, yeah, we had to have it. But I don't, my feeling is that we should just table this until we can find out more about it. What do you think, Steve?
I'd be of a mind to approve it.
Okay. I kind of thought that.
I, you know, I don't think that the well is an issue. I think that well had been grandfathered in. I don't think they, I think if they cut the water off to that, that Ms. Hurst, I think that may be an issue. Because I think she has a right to that water based on how long it's been there. The fact that they know that there's a well there that they share, so I think that's a tacit agreement.
Am I able to come in and say one more thing?
No, we closed the public hearing.
We closed the public hearing, Eric.
But just, just from a, a, a well easement purpose, I think that that has been there long enough that I think that they could not deny her access to that water. As far as a legal survey goes, as far as a legal survey goes, you know, we've, we haven't always requested legal surveys and documents and stuff like that, so that's, that's a call here. I don't know what the survey would accomplish, but that's, that's beside the point. If we want to table it, I have no issue with that either.
I would recommend, from my perspective, I think we need to table it. We need to get some more information. I feel like, feel like everyone's asking us questions, and we don't know.
I think we should be specific as to what information we want. We can't just leave it open-handed, otherwise, because we'd never accomplish anything. So if we want to have a legal survey, I mean, that's a question. We could, we could see what her surveyor says. If he could provide a description and a map. We already have the description. If you could provide a map, that would be appropriate, that's fine. If we have a question about the well, I'm sure we could have the, the township attorney address that issue with it. But I don't think we should go on and on and on, because this, maybe this information, that information. I think we're specific enough as to what we get. I have no issue with tableing that. I understand the concerns.
Yeah, I have a concern about the well for sure. I'm just, um, yeah, it's, that, that's just, those were set up as camps. And so, you know, the intent-
We have an issue if she, if she lived there with the well.
I, I don't, I think the issue is because she's asking for something else. She's lived there. They didn't, obviously, whoever, whoever did her mortgage had no interest in the well.
Right, but I don't know if, if a short-term rental, if we have, if there's anything in there that we have to make sure that they have water. I don't think that's in any of our-
Water and sewer is either by the utilities that we provide and trogids, the extension of the city service, or by septic tank and well, they are required for dwelling units.
We don't have to know the nature. We don't have to know the quality of the septic system.
Correct.
Right.
But I mean, from a dwelling unit standpoint, it is required.
But we, we do know that she has water.
Right.
But part, part of what we vote on is whether it's causing any undue hardships to the surrounding area. And you could kind of look at this as a hardship on the neighbors as far as the well goes and the easement. If it's, if we don't know what, what the status is of all that.
And what does that well, yes, see, what is that well producing? Is that producing enough water to have?
But again, I don't know if that's, I mean, if she had an easement, we wouldn't be concerned on gallons per minute.
That wouldn't matter. It's just whether or not she's in-
Oh, I don't know. I don't, I don't, I don't know.
I don't think we have that right. I don't, I don't think we do.
But we are saying she needs to have water and sewer, and we're not-
Well, we're not saying that she has to have five gallons per minute versus two gallons per minute, are we?
I, I don't know that part, Steve. I mean, I feel like somewhat confused with all this. And, you know, I guess I need some clarification as to what, yeah, what is it? You know, one time we're saying we need to have a survey, we need to have that stuff given to us. We don't have it. And, you know, those lots are, how skinny, you know, this whole thing. There's a, there's a deal about one person has 85 feet, but everyone thought they had 100 feet. I, I mean, I know it's very confusing.
We don't have the legal descriptions to confirm what they think they thought they might have.
Right.
We'd have to take a look at that, but we're not asking for legal descriptions from neighbors, so we don't care what their descriptions are. That's not part of this permit.
Right, you're right.
Okay, so we don't care if they have 30, 20 feet, or if they thought they had 100 feet.
I do want to ask the lawyer where we stand with all this, our lawyer. Because I did hear them both say they want to get legal counsel. So I think we just need to know where we stand and what our decision.
Well, I think part of the problem for us here and all of you is when, when you're doing short-term rentals like this, you're really, we don't really have any guidelines, and that's what's next on our agenda, if you looked at that, is a short-term rental discussion about what we should do. And Eric's got a lot of stuff here after y'all leave that we have to go over and try and come up with and figure out all these different problems that, you know, are coming along with these short-term rentals, which are relatively new. And, you know, should we limit them? I mean, there, there are quite a few in Eagles Nest now and 550. So like the City Marquette, you're only allowed to have so many in certain spots. And that's kind of what we're going to be discussing, how many cars should be there, how many people should be there, all that. And, you know, at the same time, they have a right to do with their property what they want to do, but it affects you also. And, you know, it's too bad that we've seen this happen so many times that, you know, you guys sound like you've been friends in the past. And this is going to kind of drive a little wedge between you. And it's unfortunate, because you're not the only neighbors who this has happened to. You know, we've done quite a few now, and neighbors end up getting mad at each other because of this. And I can see your point. I can see your point. So it's kind of tough for us unless we have more guidelines. And, you know, we've talked about just not even having due permits and just saying, all right, you're allowed to have so many. Like the City Marquette does, they don't, they don't have public hearings on this. They just say, you can have one on this block, one on this block, and-
Whoever gets there first. Is that how they did it?
Yeah. But anyway, we kind of need to get going, because we have a lot more to cover here. So I'll entertain a motion, whatever y'all want to do.
I guess I'll make a motion that we table it till we consult with our attorney.
For?
The things Steve listed.
Okay, which are?
Tell us what you listed again.
Okay, we wanted a map and a legal description, sealed, I guess. And we want to have, know the status of the well, what the attorney's opinion was on that, those two items. Okay. I'll second that.
Discussion.
Again, I, I would be of, of opinion to approve this, but I understand the concerns.
We table this, and we have to redon'tice again then?
Correct.
So we're talking about two more meetings?
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't go so as far to put a date on it yet, being that we would have to seek advice from counsel. So, but it would have to be-
It'll be at least two meetings.
What's that?
It'll be at least two meetings.
At least, correct.
Okay, all right. So the soonest it would be back on the agenda would be the beginning of July.
And it would absolutely go through the same notification process as far as to neighbors within the 300-foot buffer, as well as the notice in the mining journal, so.
You have a discussion? Roll call vote? Steve Hicken and-
Yes.
Stephanie Cody.
Yes.
Jim Johnson's a yes, and Linda Winslow?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I know it doesn't make either of you happy, but, you know, we're kind of in a bind here where we kind of need to know what we're doing. So thanks for coming and-
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see you again in a couple of months or whatever. All right, move on to short-term rental report.
Yep, so I know Jason had shared the same material that's in your packet tonight at the previous meeting that I was not at. So included in there is the original report that I don't remember quite what meeting it was shared at. I think it was three or four meetings ago at this point. Included in there is that spreadsheet, which has been updated with the one that was approved on cherry last meeting. That's, again, this is kind of a living document, ongoing, always updated. You see on there the outstanding one for tonight, which will remain.
Came back around, and they all poked it out at the end.
Oh, that one.
Just wanted it. Was it that one? Yeah.
One before this one.
Yes.
So the, what I would want to call your attention to specifically is, and there's no page numbers here, so I'll try to do my best to describe, it would be on the backside of this, which is the floor plan example. So that, on the backside of that starts what I guess Jason and I have envisioned kind of as a one-sheeter information type of thing to give out to potential applicants when they do express interests to apply for this, this use. So I mean, it's a, we tried to keep it succinct, include a lot of the relevant stuff that we've been talking about, issues that have come up. So there's a description of the approval process, density restrictions, as Chairman Johnson was just talking about, density restrictions in the city. So I explained there that the township currently does not have any, although, I mean, we would retain the right to impose those, excuse me, impose those if we found it ever necessary. We did, I include in there a breakdown of short-term versus long-term, which as we all know is that 90-day mark. Use and occupancy restrictions, which I reference again on the backside of that second page of the one-sheeter is the, an example of a posting that we, that we might want to require short-term rental properties have in there somewhere in the dwelling. Information about the fire code review inspection, the tax implications, and then the property insurance issue that we've discussed before. And then a little kind of placeholder for a three-strikes rule as far as if we get pre-substantiated complaints, then we, we might retain the right to revoke a special use permit. So that's there for your information. I'd be open for any comments or questions. We have not shared this with any potential applicants yet, although with consensus tonight, that we would start doing that.
So the ones that have been, so if we do approve this, because I like that three-strike thing, the ones that have been prior approved, would they follow these guidelines, or are they?
I wouldn't suggest approving a three, that three-strike, strikes rule tonight. I was just looking.
No, not approving it, but just if, if that ever came about.
It wouldn't grandfather, would it?
I, I would not think so.
So has, has the attorney reviewed any of this? Is this, is there too much that we're asking that we can't ask? You know what I'm saying?
Right. Attorney has not reviewed it. We do intend to have Zappa do that though.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and so, you know, like for making excessive unnecessary noise, who's going to police that?
Right. That's a good example. I mean, we would-
And if a vacation rental user enters on a neighbor's property, who's going to police that?
Again, this was-
Okay, no, I'm just, I'm just curious.
I know.
Which sounds good, because they want that to happen. They want them to know that, hey, when you're doing this, we don't want this, but, you know. Is the onus on them? Do they get arrested if a, a renter goes on there? And then after the fact, that renter was on here, and, you know, he kicked over a can of paint. So is that a person that minds it liable?
At least as I would envision it. Again, we would have the attorney review this, and we'd have more internal discussions here, as well as with staff, probably with the sheriff's department. As, as far as I envisioned it, would be, the onus would be on the property owners to police at least the initial complaint. And then from there, if it continues to be an issue, we're going to get the sheriffs involved, probably, because that's who we depend on for all other law enforcement, so.
And, and in regards to this, is, is that legislation still kicking around?
Yes.
I mean, is it, is there some movement on that, you know?
As far as I'm aware, no.
It's stalled.
Because that could be, this could be, I'll be null and void, and then I'll just go.
Hasn't got out of committee in the Senate yet, so.
But it's, it's passed the House.
Passed the House, but it's still in committee.
That's going to be a dead issue.
But, you know, I think what's different about this one compared to the other ones is this, these are, they're camps here where they go out to, they were, they go to relax and have a good time. And then, you know, you're, you're kind of right in the middle of this, and it was a family thing. And I don't know, they just didn't buy that instead of letting somebody else buy it. It's right in the middle of it.
They wanted the money.
Hmm?
They obviously.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the fact that it's not about money, I mean, you know, you can take advantage of it.
Well, now the Plaxos also bought it, so, you know, they just-
And, you know, the fact that, that she's a retired, you know, state police detective, you know, you know, I, I think that gives her a little bit of, it gives her a positive check in my luck. So, you know, like I said, you know, I, I have the feeling that if it's your property and if you follow the rules,
You can do it.
you should, you should take a crack at it, you know? And if it doesn't work out, we can pull that license, and you can say, hey, it's not going to, it's not working.
I know we've discussed this before, too, kind of after public hearings take place, but we have, I've been here a year. Jason has been here, what, 10 years? The short-term rental ordinance has been in place since 2018. As far as I know, we have not received any complaints. As far as going as a party.
And I can understand that, not my backyard mentality. I can, I can understand that. You know, but I think that, you know, I think that a lot of times they'll bring up the worst possible situation and the worst possible scenario that has not occurred. But then they figure, well, you know, this is, this is what's going to happen, you know, they're going to kill our kids, and they're going to, you know, hang our dogs and all this kind of stuff. And, you know, it's, it's not proven to be the fact.
Speculative, yeah.
But on this one, I think it was more of what are those easements? Because they are sharing property, and they are sharing wells in there. It's just not like-
That's a bummer to have a shared well.
My house and your house, and just let me do what I want, you know, but it's, it's a mix.
I don't think, there's probably no, well, see, there might not be water that they can get there. That's-
Well, I think-
You would think there was water, but-
If the neighbor got water, they should have water.
I think it's a money thing, because drilling a well is, I mean, it's expensive.
It's expensive to pay for water and sewer in the township.
That's right, that's right. So I think, I'm sure they have water somewhere there, unless they look on a rock.
Did Luks build that?
I think so. I think he had all that property, and he must have built all that stuff along there for probably all his kids.
I can tell you Gepards lived there a long time, okay? So, and I never heard any complaints out of anyone there. I never heard Jeff or Suzanne say anything in the kid, I mean, you know, really. Yeah, and I was, yeah, they're not little kids that they have.
No.
One is.
One is?
Under 12, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I did, I'm just concerned about the whole well thing and handshake thing. I, I mean, you know, you can have some person say, I had the handshake. This person didn't even buy it from Jim Luke, okay? No, so she didn't buy it from Luke, so it doesn't matter.
For giving him an easement, I mean, it's right there.
I love that theme too, because they also have-
Yeah, I, I just want some clear guidelines, because I think we get this, we get stuck in the middle here.
And then the fact that they know they're doing it.
If this is this, and this is this, and this is this, it's a perk.
Okay, you know, we, you know, in my opinion, what we should do is we should get rid of this permit thing for the short-term rentals and just limit them to so many, and limit them so many to a location and just, and just do what the city does. So, I mean, this is going to start taking up so much of our time here. And we're just pitting neighbors against neighbors by doing this, by having these public hearings. And then they're going to be mad at each other for, you know, why, why go through all this?
They'll be mad at us.
You know, just, just do what the city does and say, all right, whoever wants to have them can have them. You have to follow all these rules and guidelines. Whoever wants to have them can have them. You have to follow all these rules and guidelines and it's the same thing as renting.
So could I buy one from my neighborhood and then the permit's taken and nobody else can buy it?
Well, it depends how, how we set it up.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I'm just playing.
It, that's the true part though, and then they move right with the house.
I mean, I, that's, that's.
I don't quite.
I just think this is, I mean, we've been doing an hour and a half of this now and.
Yeah.
Every time.
But I, I think the other way of looking at it, at least these neighbors know that it's going on versus having somebody pull up the next day at the end of the place and say, woo-hoo, we're renting this on a short-term and you go, what? When did that happen?
Well, you can notify, you can notify the neighbors that this is going to happen.
Who does? The city?
Township.
Well, no, if it changes though.
You know.
How does the cities work?
I, I don't know. I just know they don't have public hearings for them.
I was not, I thought they did, so I was not aware of that, but I do know that they have their restrictions as far as and.
And they're all.
It's like one per block unless the block is over five hundred feet, then you can have one more additional. They do have density restrictions on them.
Right. Well, Jason even suggested that we get rid of the public hearings too, a while back. I don't know if you remember that or not.
Before me, before Bethany.
Hmm, no, it wasn't that long ago.
I wasn't here.
You might not have been here for the meeting, but you remember that, Steve?
Vaguely, I guess. I, I still think they have their purpose, you know.
Well, notification is a purpose, right?
They, they do.
Hmm.
But if we're just going to allow them because they're. You can do what you want with your, with your property, I mean, what, what reason would we deny them? Like in your mind, because you're saying everybody should be able to do that.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying that we better have a damn good reason why they can't.
What, what would be a good reason then, to you?
It's not safe. You know, it.
But that wouldn't be up to us, that would be up to the fire department.
Well, I, 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 well, then I, I, you know, I, we've turned some down, but I think that I, you know.
Remember that one up on the Big Bay Road that wasn't safe and. You know, we, I think we approved that.
Yeah, but the guys were like four hundred feet away too.
Yeah.
You know, they were worried about garbage blowing uphill. I mean, you know, I mean, yeah, you can worry about all kinds of stuff, but the fact that it, you know. Yeah, I, I, I think the short-term, I, I think the fact that we have public hearings to allow people to express what's going on, we get to hear what the owner has to say too. Because we could, you know, anybody could just start opening up short-term rentals and with the state passes like.
You'd still have to go through, you'd have to provide all this info, but we just wouldn't vote on it. It would be up to Jason and Eric to say, all right, you guys can do it.
Making a staff level decision.
They'll take the heat.
Well, not too much take the heat, but just, you know, I mean, it takes, it's going to, we're going to get more and more and more of these and.
Well, unless we limit them.
Do we want to bar ourselves down with this or just let them just say yes or no to it?
Well, I kind of agree with Steve, you know, I do want the neighbors to say something, okay.
And let, let them hear what the person has to say and let them hear the questions that they were asking that maybe they hadn't considered. And then let, you know, and let them hear that we haven't had issues with short-term rentals in the township. We've got short-term rentals here, you know, and like, you know, has this ever happened, Jason? No. And then, you know, if somebody roaches a question, well, they might do this, and I'll say, well, has, has this happened, Eric? And they don't know. It hasn't happened in the short-term rentals we have. And then people might say, well, you know, they might have a better attitude about letting it happen. And if they know that they could lose their license after a year and they can't do it again, then they know that at least they have some recourse. And if these people from Colorado come up here in the summer, you know, for six weeks or three weeks, they may not even be impacted by it, so, I mean, it's, it's hard to say what, you know. But again, you know, I believe in property rights, I mean, if, and, and she seemed like she was a legitimate person. I think she was sincere about what she was going to do. I think that, you know, she wouldn't want to have issues and I think that has a lot to do with it too, so I'd like to hear what those people have to say.
I think most of the people that we've listened to don't want to have issues and don't want their neighbors upset and they want to keep renting them.
Absolutely, because it is still their home.
It's their home and they get bad ratings otherwise, you know, so.
I do want to know if a survey is required to get a mortgage.
Well, it's a slash in there.
No, no, not here. I, I think the bank requires.
Oh.
I think she had mentioned she was like Rocket or something.
Well, she said she had a land contract.
Yeah.
And then once you got a land contract, then it's a whole different, you know.
You don't need anything.
When I was a, when I was a surveyor, this is a true story, a person bought a hu- a house in McGahn, on the North Road, McGahn Valley Road back there, right? And we went there, back there and surveyed it because they had just bought the house from the bank, that, that through a bank. We went back there and I'll be damned if the house was not on the lot and that guy stopped paying his mortgage. Why? Because he, what was he paying the mortgage for? The bank, they couldn't have the lot. He had the house. So all they had, they want, they had given him two hundred fifty thousand dollars for it, was an empty lot. And why should he pay a mortgage?
Wow.
Interesting.
Yeah, so then all of a sudden, that's when banks get excited and especially now that, because layup frontage like this, when it was developed back in the stories and thirties, they did it with a compass and a chain. And it was good enough and everybody knew where it was, but when the house prices are a half million dollar or a million dollar homes and the bank mortgages it and they survey and they go, oh my God. That's when they're going to come to the township. That's what happened at Lake Enchantment. The lots are small and your, your camp is on the next guy's lot. And a daisy chains around and banks, they don't want to touch it anymore and there are no more sales out there until the township corrects it. Is that right? Assessor's plaques are for that. The assessor says, we got a problem. We're going to have to solve this because we can't tax this. We can't tax the description.
Probably my camp.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm not a assessor's plaques like that. Small fifty-foot lots on lakes, fifty-foot, that's not a big difference when you shift to twelve-foot. Oh my God. Your camp's on my lot, it's okay, and it's just all the way around.
Your sauna's on my camp, my property, yeah.
And that's when the township has to recognize that situation.
That's, I think that's.
Sonja was on my property and.
Yeah, because the banks aren't going to want to touch that mess. It's just too much of a mess for a bank to mess. Get on a mess with that.
So I do think we need to, Steve, let's ask our attorney and, yeah, sometimes he takes a little while, I'm just saying.
More and more people are buying with cash because you hear about all these cash shoppers going through the banks.
Yeah, so then they don't need a survey.
Point.
Yeah, so I'm looking at them thinking, hmm, who had cash? Mm-hmm. Wait, they were poor. They just, they, we were just told, I'm retired, so I need the money.
But you know, the thing is, is that they could, the neighbors could have had surveys done too and they're just keeping their mouths shut.
Exactly.
Yeah, wow, so, um, so, yeah, I actually.
Another month, it could be another issue here, so.
I feel like we need to know if we want to keep putting these on the agenda before we have our set of.
Maybe we should put a hold on short-term rentals until we get this figured out. What would that do?
I think with that.
I don't think we can do that.
If we don't have all the information, we shouldn't have a public hearing, you know, because we'll just end up gambling it, you know?
Right.
And it, and, and again, we, we have the checklist. The checklist was, yes, I've done this, yes, I've done this, yes, I've done this, yes, I've done this. And then somebody took her money and said, yes, she did it. So, you know, there's that. That's, the onus on the township to say, hey, you don't have this yet. We're not going to, we're not going to take your money until you get this for us. But once we've taken her money, she figures she's submitted everything that she needs to submit. So then the onus is on the township. Why did we let her not get by with it? Or if, if she gave what we assumed was acceptable to the township, we should say, this is good enough for the township. But if we're saying it's not good enough for the township and we checked out the box that it was, then we got a problem.
And we've had that happen before.
To me, if you.
I don't think it surprised her tonight because she has mentioned about the survey.
Right, she knew it was.
She knew we were.
She knew, I swear.
Well, it says right here, so Eric, what do you think about this? It says, property boundary survey slash map and legal description. With the seal of the registered surveyor who prepared them. To me, that means you need to have.
Right. A registered survey. Or a map and description that a surveyor sealed.
It's got to be sealed.
Right, which was not.
And she doesn't have that.
Right, but it was checked off that, and we, we accepted what she gave us.
Right.
Because I, I guess for some clarification, I think we were under the assumption, well, not the assumption, but that she was progressing towards getting that survey.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and again, kind of talking about the timelines and how everything lined up, it unfortunately was not.
But this is not the first time that stuff like that been checked and we've said, where is it? And, well, you know, it's, this is the type of thing it is, so we really didn't need it. It's like, if you're going to ask for it, you.
Well, it's kind of a catch twenty-two because you got to pay for it in order to get on the agenda.
Cheap survey. I'm telling you right now, if that survey costs you less than five thousand bucks, I'll kiss a dog. That's going to be a pricey survey there. That's a scary pricey survey because that description is.
Does the motion include a registered survey? Does the motion include that they had to have a registered survey?
It's, it's sealed.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, sure.
But that is, that's because I know we.
You probably won't even be able to get it done in two months or not a month, first of all.
They might be able to turn it around and, and it's, there's, could be surveys that have worked in the area and will be able to write a description, but it's still, that description right there, I don't even know where.
Yeah, five hundred and one, one hundred and the other.
It's worthless.
I can't figure out what it says.
It's worthless. Because if they changed five fifty, then what?
Yeah.
If they changed the line to five fifty, and I think they might have done that there, then what are you dealing with? I mean, then you got to think of where was five fifty at the time. Yeah, no, that's true. That's absolutely true.
They did change.
And then you're hosed.
That was probably in the.
So in the future.
We don't have public hearings.
On the agenda, if we don't get the.
Or else change that requirement that we don't need a registered survey.
But don't even have, you know, you shouldn't even have a public hearing called if you don't have the survey in hand. You should have that by the time you fill out the application, I guess.
Well, and that would be on the owner's.
Waste everybody's time.
Coming to.
Right.
The check, they're, they have to complete the checkers and understand what they.
If it's on the checklist and they don't submit it, then they don't, don't, don't.
We don't take their money.
Right, well, it doesn't.
Yeah, we just don't take.
Well, you can take their money and then wait for the, uh, you say the public hearing won't be scheduled until you get all this stuff to us.
Well, you could, but since it doesn't really matter because we don't have a limited number, then what are they giving us money for?
Just don't take the check or anything.
I wouldn't. It's not a complete application, so don't take the money with. But again, we have to write all this down and have this nice little check because it's not fair to the people that work here.
No, it's not.
And it's not fair to the customer coming in.
What kind of change in it so they know what we're doing?
We're going to get more and more and more of these because people see this as a gold mine.
Yeah.
Okay, and somebody who lives on the lake.
It can be.
Gold mine, ding ding ding.
It can be.
Well, when hotel rooms are three hundred dollars a night in Marquette. Yeah.
I have friends that are renting these out on a train lake for four hundred bucks a night.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. My brother's one of them.
Really, I've a camp, but we have a outhouse, does that go?
Just think how much money you're making.
I know, but you, that is in, that is income that you're supposed to declare.
Well, you probably do. It's a business. See, that's the whole thing. This is a business.
Don't. Some people, honest people do, but.
I'm not sure about that classification. I don't think the state has made any official declaration as far as declaring short-term rentals a business use. The, the legislation that's pending does. There's language in there that would declare them as a.
That's what she was referring to.
Right.
She might have got her head in the wagon.
So I got some clarification there.
They are running a small business.
This has been as complicated as marijuana and stuff.
Yeah.
Marijuana was bad. This is getting bad too.
But a long-term rental is a business too because you still have to maintain a house. I mean, that's a business.
It's a business and you have to declare that on your income tax. Yeah.
To me, it's a business.
Yeah.
And if they're taking your home set away, it's not a residence anymore, it's a business.
So she's not even really living in this place. So she is not, it's not her primary residence.
Studying it.
No. She's like, yeah, people, yeah, sometimes. She's living in Wisconsin.
Yeah.
Well, Ishpeming is what's on her application.
Yeah, she, but she said, I'm in Wisconsin.
Well, and the other time she's in Ishpeming, she's not even living there.
Yeah, and the significant other, um, works with vacation rentals.
Right.
Yeah, it's a lucrative business right now, that's all I'll say. It won't be forever, but it certainly is today.
All right, well, let's, um, what do we, what do we want to do about the short-term rental report here? Uh, what, what direction, what do we want to do and not do and give Eric some direction as to what we're going to do and. Do we want to come up with. Guidelines for, I mean, do we want to discuss it now?
I think I need more time to go through this.
Yeah, I, I read some of it, but I, I have questions. I am sure Danny has questions. And I, I would like to look at our surrounding communities and what they have. So what is McGahn doing? What's McGahn Township doing? You know, when we compare things, we oftentimes walk around us and maybe they're doing zero. I, I mean, I don't know. I, I, yeah, you don't want to be way off here, but what is the city doing? How did they decide to give those licenses out and do those licenses last forever? Or do they go?
They, I think they last forever.
So when they go with the house?
They apply to the property.
Well, how does anybody ever get a license then, Jim? No one else can get a license.
Unless somebody gives it up.
Why would they give it up?
Sounds like a liquor license.
If they don't want it anymore, if they're not going to use it.
Wow.
If somebody buys a house and doesn't want to rent it out and they want to live there.
You think they would get, oh, because they want it to be taxed.
Then why would they pay the extra tax?
Like you just said, it kind of ends up being like a liquor license, yes. For example, on my vacation to the Keys last year, earlier this year actually, um. Reading an article about short-term rentals down there, that's how they, the Florida Keys was dealing with it, uh, like Florida Keys, the city, there's multiple cities and jurisdictions, whatever. Uh, but the Florida Keys, they put a cap on it, um, and then. Property owners basically barter and trade and buy them from other property owners and they were going in the range of two hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred thousand dollars.
For a license.
A license?
Yes.
Really?
Yes, so.
So you can buy them from an individual then?
That's, that's how I understood it. Much like liquor license, you can acquire it from a different.
Not here though.
You can build and do this here.
No, not in my cap.
That's just, I'm just using that as an example.
Florida's always unique.
Right.
How do they get away with doing that there? To be able to transfer them to other houses?
I'm not sure.
It's probably owned by a person, not a house. The person picks the.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure.
But, but yeah.
It must be an ordinance where you can transfer it then, where these is involved or something here?
Liquor license transfer.
Does, is there something written up in the ordinance here that says you have to keep it with that house? Or can you take it?
As far as special use permits go, they apply to the property, yeah.
So they don't go with the owner, right?
We're talking about licenses there.
So they must not be special use permits.
They're selling licenses. All right, let's keep rolling here. I work at five thirty in the morning.
So, yeah, just to sum it all up, um, that information sheet, that is information that I'll spill out to people over the phone when they ask. So I mean, I would maybe recommend that we have some consensus as far as being able to share that. The rule of posting, obviously we'll wait for Attorney Zappa to review that before we require that to be posted in units. Also included is the, the inspection checklist, which I think that would be appropriate to share with applicant, for potential applicants as well, just to know what they're getting themselves into as far as that goes.
And is that what the fire department's using today?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to see what other places are using.
Okay.
I mean, if we're going to review it, let's make sure it's all the same. I'm sure it's some standard thing.
So we'll just keep it on the agenda and just discuss it further at the next meeting then.
And if I can pull together, um, kind of what surrounding townships and communities are doing as far as short-term rentals, their process.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Restrictions, things like that.
Can you make a grid? An Excel grid that it compares?
Sure.
I mean, that's easy to read usually. You guys good with that? An Excel document that you can.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a lot of information, just.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't have to have a lot of detail. This, this is, you know.
Terms or license.
So many.
Yes or no.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then did we want legal to look at what he already wrote to see if we're heading in the right direction? I know we're reviewing it, but do we want them to look at it? To see if we should even be looking at it? Or that we.
Do we want to wait till we look at it one more time and then give it to him because he charges us by that number?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Just saying. I think. Jason would know for sure.
Well, then let's talk about attainable, affordable housing.
Yep, so I do know that it was brought up at the last meeting, um, that you guys wanted some, at least some more information to spur discussion about maybe a possible ordinance amendment in the future. Um, that wouldn't happen until later in the summer, maybe fall, if anything. So again, there's some articles in here that is purpose just to get wheels turning. Um, article from Bridge, Michigan about Charlevoix and some of the issues they're facing, some very similar issues as far as uh, housing attainability, affordability, short-term rentals are mentioned in here. Um, tourist economy is mentioned in here as far as uh, businesses finding workers. So I think it gives a pretty good overview of um, issues that a lot of Michigan communities are facing. Um, next article is from the Michigan State Extension as far as infill housing. Um, I know that this is something that Jason and I have talked about as far as maybe allowing duplexes in the urban residential Trowbridge Park. Um, by right, to allow for some of that infill housing, increase the density. Um, we do have quite a few undeveloped right-of-ways in Trowbridge Park. Um, so I mean, there is room for development in there, um, even though it is our more higher density area. Um, and then a couple of articles, a little bit more data-driven as far as zoning effects on housing affordability and things you can do from a zoning perspective to influence that. Um, so I don't really want to get into too much detail on this. Um, if you do have questions, I can certainly try to answer them. Otherwise, I would encourage you to review these before the next meeting because I think this will kind of be another kind of placeholder, kind of like the short-term rental discussion has been for the last few, so.
Just for your information, I was, I'm on this Facebook page. It's called the Visual Capitalist. And it had the uh, worst affordable housing markets in in the world. And it just had a bunch of information on there about um, your scores of what's considered severely affordable and seriously affordable and moderately affordable. And you take the average price of a home and uh, the average, the median price in, or the median income of a family, divide that by um, the house price. And if it's five point one or above, it's considered severely unaffordable. In Marquette's like five point three, the city. And the township, I was, I looked it up and it's four point one, which is considered seriously unaffordable. The county is three, which is considered moderately unaffordable. So it's not just the city, it's the county and the township too.
And I think it would extend far beyond that as well.
Mm-hmm.
Michigan, Manisha, I mean, yeah, it's widespread.
But, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
We're, we're kind of creating, making it worse just by doing short-term rentals in a way too by.
We are, we are.
You know? Taking those off the market.
I'm surprised that um, hotel motel groups haven't been storming people about short-term rentals.
I am too.
Yeah, I'm surprised.
So there, the articles there for your information, hopefully you'll have some time to read them before the next meeting, so. No action needed tonight on that.
What do you think about tiny houses? In in the township?
I think they're a very good option as far as increasing number of units. Um, and kind of hand in hand with the tiny houses is uh, EVUs as they're called, accessory dwelling units, granny flats. Um, I mean, there's a lot of colloquial terms for it. Um, I do know that for that uh, tiny home special use permit application that you guys approved a public hearing for at the last meeting, um, citing two of those on one lot. I mean, that's another, again, another avenue that could be explored as far as increasing number of units um, available to residents, so.
So, so we've let people put two houses on one lot?
No.
Oh, well, we have in the past. There's two camps on one lot. That, that Luke's own. So yes.
I wouldn't say that the township zoning and planning approved that. That's would be considered a non-conforming use.
There you go.
Co- correct, but it's been done. It it's been done over the years. It might not be approved any longer, but it's been done. And there are some in Trowbridge as well. There's some granny flats. There are many garages with apartments above them that people um, live in.
I'm sure there's short-term rentals also that didn't get approved.
I think there are. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Uh.
I know there was one on Bookton Road there when Dave Lee was on there. He was always complaining about it.
And one of the affordable attainable housing, a new term I heard was market-based housing.
There's also a term for easement that, yes.
Which is kind of what you're talking about.
Yeah.
I like Bridge MI. They have really good stuff, but they are a think tank that sort of moves a little bit uh. Not, they're not conservative, that's what I'll say. So if you read some of the articles. Yeah. Anyways.
I, I think there's gonna be a use for tiny homes coming up in the future, you know, for people that.
And granny flats, however we call them. Yeah. Um, older people don't want to go to nursing homes. They want to stay close to family in France.
Mm-hmm.
Anyways, I I I agree. I think there's a huge discussion on housing. Um, and maybe you guys already know this, but all the lots that are east of Ontario are sixty-foot lots. Fifty foot, sixty-foot lots. The lots that are west of Ontario are eighty or ninety feet lots. So there, there was a huge uproar about all of that as I grew up. Because they let all those houses infill, you would call it. Um, well, it was the Woodridge store, but down by the Crip, when you go, they let all those houses build into there and there was, they all had sewers in their backyard. Dwayne Fields, they called them. But they were very small lots. So that was one of the drivers for why the sewer came through in the township. But, but know that there's a different size uh, requirement for lots in the township, in Trowbridge. So yeah, so that whole infill and those paper roads, um, as I call them, are undeveloped roads. You know, there are quite a few of those still in Trowbridge. Whether or not people want neighbors that close is always the question.
Well, you know, it's kind of funny when you think about how we, we caused this greenhouse effect. We cau, we had kind of also caused this housing problem too by, you know, I mean, there were, there were fifty-foot lots, you know, back in the, what, forties and fifties.
In the city, yeah.
Now, you know, a hundred-foot lots or, you know, I don't know what is in the city. You can't. Unless they're grandfathered, but I think they, I think they're eighty-foot lots minimum now.
Are they? Because they were skinny.
Yeah.
Like those spaghetti. Is that what they call them? I've never heard that term.
That's what things were more affordable back then.
Well, and people lived in garages in their, with their parents, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyways, um, yeah, the infill thing is an interesting concept, but we'd have to put roads in.
Well, any more discussion on that? Well, I guess we'll move on to the CIP.
Yep, this is another kind of for your information, no action needed tonight. Um, the manager of Cangis did direct staff to start thinking about the capital improvement pro, program for twenty twenty-three. Um, so included in your package tonight, in addition to the brief staff report, are the requests from last year. I do not have information as far as which of these have been funded, um, and which have not. Um, but I do know some of them have, some of them haven't. Um, so we're hoping to have staff requests into the planning commission by the uh, July thirteenth meeting. Um, and if the planning commission would want, we can certainly ask the fire department chief Shanahan and then uh, Department of Public Works superintendent Bodinas and then any other department head to uh, request them to be at a meeting so they can answer questions. Um, so.
So these are just some of the requests so far?
No, these are, this is the full.
This is last year's?
Full host of requests from last year.
Okay. So there'll be some new ones coming up besides?
Correct.
Okay.
So again, for your information, something to start thinking about, like I said, this is something that the department heads will need to compile again, so. Um, nothing to take action on tonight.
Yeah, because I think last year we got it late. I mean, it was almost after the fact.
Right.
And I think that if it is not purview or asked, we're required at least to take a look at it.
Right.
You know, three hundred thousand dollars for eighteen hundred square foot heated garage. That's, that one made my eye flutter a little bit, but anyway, so.
Or the fire truck?
The fire trucks purchased the hydro.
Hey, actually, I had a question about that. So how old was that fire truck? Twenty years old?
Uh, more than that.
Sixteen, I think it said.
Oh, it was more than that, I think.
Was it?
Walla State.
Anyhow, how many miles was it?
Well, maybe that was the ambulance.
It's not about the miles, so see?
Well, what kind of maintenance do you need if you don't drive it?
I think it's a, well, we'll have to ask Dan Shanahan. Okay, not me.
Three hundred million dollars is a lot of maintenance. It's a lot of maintenance.
Yeah, they expire, um, they expire way before the mileage is up there. Yeah, that's just how it works. I I don't know. The roof is funded too.
Yeah.
On that thing. Yeah, so, so we have a couple of things already funded. We just funded two trucks.
Where does that money come from then? Just uh, the general fund that gets put into CIP?
We're gonna find out where that money goes from.
Oh.
Yeah, not, not really sure yet.
Oh.
Yeah, well, I mean, I know where. The money for the roof is coming from sewer and water fund, which they have money in their fund to pay for projects. So they're splitting it.
For capital outlay projects only?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
So.
Maybe we need to have the treasurer come here and answer questions.
Or we could just get a report like we've been asking for. As to how much money is available for the CIP and.
Yeah, they.
Because then we know what, well, because there's a bunch of essentials on here and desirables, well, I'm gonna say, oh, the essentials are needed more than desirables, obviously, and.
Yeah, but that's still a subject.
So there you go, Eric. Everything you want put essential.
We really need that shiny new fire truck.
Uh, yeah, I think they did, but. You can ask them, not me.
So the other one was not just junked? Because nobody can use that fire truck?
They won't even buy, they, I don't think anybody will buy it.
So they just junk it, melt it down?
Let's ask them. Yeah, I think, it's not, it's still here. The other one doesn't come for a year or something.
But there's no fires?
Yeah, well, they have other fire trucks. I don't think it's the pumper, but I don't know that either. We'll ask Mr. Shanahan.
Is it a ladder, ladder truck?
I don't know.
It's like, I think I remember. Before they were.
Dan just drives the old ones sometimes.
If I remember right, I think you had to have a ladder truck or something that went up so many stories because that's why the hospital couldn't come in here because you didn't have one of those?
Oh, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, it had to.
I don't think the city does.
It was our height ordinance because we didn't have a ladder.
Yeah, yeah. And then we let the hotels, we have to limit the height of the hotels because our fire department can only. Yeah.
All right. So we'll just wait for that. Is that going to be at the next meeting we'll have that or?
Uh, there'll be, I think, more information at the next meeting. Um, but like I said, we're hoping, not hoping, but we're gonna have requests to the planning commission by the July thirteenth meeting.
Oh, good.
Okay. And when does all that have to be done?
It's a good question. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Uh, probably by the time they approve the budget, which there's some law, November first, maybe? December first.
December first?
Maybe.
That's when the new budget starts or that's when?
Nope, it starts January first.
Okay.
I asked that last week.
Any unfinished business? Correspondence?
Yep, so seven six zero Lake Enchantment Road Property Maintenance Update. Um, to refresh everybody, tickets were issued to all three property owners in November. Um, after an informal hearing in the, in the court, um, we came to a settlement agreement that the property would be cleaned up by June first. Um, or the township would retain some rights as far as going out there to clean it up ourselves and then assessing um, having the property owner reimburse, um, reimburse the township for the fee or the cost of the cleanup. Um, I, with a couple of sheriff's department personnel inspected the property on Monday. Um, little to no progress has been made. Um, I will note that, yeah, some junk cars were removed. There were fewer junk cars at this inspection on Monday than there were at my previous inspection, most previous inspection in, I think, December. Um, however, the rest of the property, I would say, has deteriorated as far as junk, uh, snowmobiles, lawn mowers, hot water tanks, car batteries.
Garage door panels.
Door panels. Yep, that was something new that I noticed. Um, constru, uh, debris and construction, uh, it's endless. I mean, the list is endless. It's, it's, the property's in a bad condition. Um, so we are going to confer with Attorney Zappa on this before we do take any further action. Um, but I would suspect that we will probably proceed with uh, pursuing cleanup on our, kind of our own accord and then charge the property owner as appropriate, so.
Has this been the first time it's ever happened where you've had to go in there and do it and then charge them?
Uh, for that, for the township, I believe, yes. I mean, in my, in my personal, personal history and previous organizations I've worked for, we've, I've been party to similar situations like this, so.
Must be pretty bad.
Oh, it's lot length, lot length. It's just horrible.
But we can't go see it, right? We can't drive up there or it's private property.
It's horrible and it's, it's, it's gone onto the neighbors. You know, there's a black pickup truck there, that's his. There's a blue, I don't know if you noticed the blue truck up on the top of the hill with the little shack there. That's his. I don't know where you drove in around. You came, drove in and came down the hill to his parcel or if you walked in on our parcel, I'm not sure.
I, we came in on your parcel.
But his road back, there's another truck back up there.
Where does that road go, do you know?
Yeah, if, if, just before you get, just before you take the long grade down to our hill, hill down, there's one goes out to the left.
Gotcha.
That's his access.
Okay.
All the way back down around. So there's another abandoned truck parked on top of the hill, a blue one, no plates. And then a little kind of shack that someone might have been living in up there.
Okay.
So there's that. I also wanted to ask you about two seventy-five Lake Enchantment. What do you know about that? There's somebody living in there. They got a mailbox up there. And a little box that says UPS, FedEx delivery here. And it looks like there's a metal building up there of some sort. I think someone's actually living up there. Because they, is it a trailer? I don't, I don't know what it is. I don't know if they're building a house, if they pulled a permit. But somebody's, somebody's up there living because they're getting mail and FedEx and UPS deliveries there. And it's, it is not a home. And I don't see any home building going on there at all. So you may want to look into that too. It's on the, geez, I don't know, left side of the road as you're driving in.
Okay.
You know what I'm talking about, little sand trail. I drove up there and I just saw a couple of big trees down and now I see there's like a little, little gray little box of something up there. I think somebody's living up there.
Maybe a tiny home.
So anyway, that might be something to pay attention to anyway, because somebody's already got a mailbox and living there.
Put it on our radar.
There you go.
Well, it looks like a pretty nice driveway going in there. It's paved. If that's the driveway they're talking about.
It is.
Wow.
Ours, ours isn't paved and we have to share it with the neighbor.
But this is like a five hundred foot long driveway.
Wonder if it's wide enough for that fire truck to get down.
It's like he has to take a sharp right to get to her property.
That must be.
Hers.
Yeah. How's the fire truck get out once?
That must be the spot that they fixed with the culverts, the fire sand.
Mm-hmm. Where the.
Where the new, or is that just shade?
It's, I'm sure it's beautiful. I mean, I'm sure it's just beautiful. Yeah.
Lake frontage is a little daisy.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of swampy before you get to the lake. Get parts of it out there and it was a little bit.
Yeah.
It's a little marginal, but it's the lake frontage.
Yeah.
I drove Walter, but I kind of didn't want to drive down the driveway because I thought, hmm, that's private and that's the hard thing about trying to figure out what these.
Well, maybe if we do do that tour or something, and since this is a subject matter, maybe we'll have permission to go and see.
We can't, don't we have right to go in there just on the basis of the applications? We have right to, we can look, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. I didn't know that.
Okay.
There we go.
Yeah.
I don't think we can go into the building, but we can certainly go and look at the property.
Go drive down the road and not feel the trespassing because we're trying, okay?
Unless somebody comes up with a gun or something, huh?
Yeah, there's always that.
In today's world.
Well, like for example, with the inspections at seven six zero Lake Enchantment, I mean, as a, I'm not gonna call myself an officer of the law, but as somebody who enforces an ordinance, I mean, I, we do have some rights as far as property access. Obviously, if you see a no trespassing sign, you kind of have to gauge
Yeah.
how you want to approach it from there. But I mean, as common purview or in the, in the, in the public, not right-of-way, but the, the public space where you can see from the road, I mean, there are rights for people to inspect property. So from that perspective, I would say, yes, you, you could, um, special use permit, certainly.
Yeah.
Um, go drive by properties and check them out, so.
I did that one time on that, uh, I think it was Partridge Trail Road and I drove down there and
Oh, you drove down.
All these people were like staring at me like, what are you doing in here and?
In there being beautiful.
I'll read quickly.
Partridge Trail, is that the Altman's place and Peter?
No, it was that, um, Ray, um, Bishop, Episcopal Bishop, they were doing a short terminal there. Couple of years ago.
They were talking about five fifty, right?
Half of five fifty, that.
Yeah, Partridge Trail, I mean, well, it must be close, close to five fifty.
Yeah.
Cause Peter Kaufman lives right at the very end.
Yeah, yeah.
And then Mike Altman built a place up there.
Yeah, you're right.
In fact, I, I, we surveyed Altman's before they built it, that was.
Yeah, it was, before you take the left there, it was like straight ahead.
And Sue still lives there.
On the, on the note of the inspection issue, on the back of the special use permit application, so if you look at the one from tonight. The, the application page at the bottom, we have a optional item. I hereby grant permission for the members of the Marquette Township Commission, zoning administrator, planner, and the fire marshal to enter the above described property for the purposes of gathering information related to this application. Note to applicant, this permission is optional and failure to grant permission will not affect any decision on your application, so.
Did that say planning commission though, or just planner?
It says Marquette Township Commission, but I would assume that it's, we're dismissing the planning commit, planning word in there, so.
We'll fix that, right?
Yeah.
On that. This must be just, um, in word.
So as far as Lake Enchantment goes, I don't have any further update, um, but I would, uh, like I said, we're gonna confer with Attorney Zappa. So hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have another update as far as our next course of action there.
Judging, you're gonna be happy, you know?
Right.
And make sure all three of them.
They're, all three of them got tickets, so they're, all three are still involved, they all signed that settlement agreement, so they're all, they're all still.
And they are the property owners, so they, they're all three of them gotta be involved.
Can't you just throw them in jail?
No.
That's a joke, that's a joke.
If there, if there's nothing further on that one, I do have a, another item under correspondence to relay. Um, the public hearing for that tiny homes request at four hundred County Road five fifty where the proposed is site two on one lot. Uh, that public hearing will be moved to the July thirteenth meeting rather than the next meeting now, just a, just an FYI, so.
Okay. Um, Linda, you're up for the township board report.
So the township board met last night. Um, the events committee said that there is a car show on Father's Day weekend, um, come out and see the cars. If you have a car, bring it, yeah. Their, um, STAN Tech Water Affordability and Planning Study was presented and there is no recommendation to increase water rates for the next ten years, so that was, that was good to hear. That means our fund balance in our water department fund is good. Um, we also decided to, um, purchase two trucks for the water sewer department and the grounds department, so there's two trucks and they divided it up somewhere or another. Um, they're used trucks and they're from Fry Chevrolet and they should have gotten them today. Um, two of the trucks no longer were working. Uh, that was really it, other than our, um, township. Manager talked about the road. The intersection and they, um, did put that on TV six last night.
The fourteen million dollar interchange?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, and the, um, intended, uh, development of, um. A development track, I guess I'll call it, housing development back there, um, by Longyear, is my understanding.
Mixed use according to Jason.
Oh, mixed use, okay, yeah.
Mixed use affordable housing?
Affordable, there's no such thing as affordable. Yeah.
What, what are they gonna do with fourteen million dollars to that intersection?
They are gonna go around it, Jim, so they're gonna, I, I don't know where the township plan is, but out on, um. Our website, there's a plan, a future use plan kinda thing, and I think their intent is to go behind Meyer. And come out there. So I'm not quite sure, I didn't really look at it.
Also, that's part of fourteen million, that one, not just the intersection of Wright Street and?
No, that intersection's gonna all be changed because they keep saying it's a dangerous intersection, I, I mean, I don't know, I don't go down Forestville Road. So.
Yeah.
So they'll, they'll reduce the traffic at that intersection, the intersection will still be there for the people who lives in here in Woods. Here in Woods, traffic must come out that way.
You wanna be wrong about?
No.
Should be.
I don't think, on that, I don't think they can do that.
The dimensions aren't there for around about, um, for the topography and.
Yeah, the way it's down that hill, um, so, so ten million has to come from the state. Four million has to come from the road commission. And the township has to kick in some money like five hundred thousand dollars. Oh, that's what we said, oh.
That's a whole fire truck.
No, it's not, two thirds of a fire truck.
It, it's so, it's money.
Yeah.
The revenue tax revenue will be coming from the funds back there.
They did say, they did say, yeah, that the revenue from the development would. Yeah, do you think, I mean, you know, there were, we didn't decide anything, it was just presented, um. You know, just to go into the back way to Meyer would probably be a real plus for the people coming from the city and Trowbridge and not having to go on the highway, it would be a access road of different sort, um.
So then that money would also include putting that road over to five fifty?
That was the whole, yeah, that's the whole intent is to, I, I, and then sewer and water would be on that road. So then they, well, and you know, it's all just talk.
Yeah.
Kind of like paper roads in Trowbridge, you know, lots of, but someone has to do it and, you know, where's the development and where's the money and.
Yeah.
I always wonder, where's the industry to drive the people to come here? I, I mean, I know you can work from home. Um, but that's not gonna work for everyone for forever and they're not gonna let everyone work from home and let's work from home out on the Lake Superior Beach, but there's no internet, I, I mean, I, I just don't know.
They're all solid, no, as fast as you can put them up.
There's been some houses for sale that haven't moved, I've been watching them to see who's gonna buy what, but. Steve, is it three hundred dollars a square foot to build a house today? So, okay, so let's talk about a ten thousand square foot house, or a, a thousand square foot house, okay, a thousand, that's what, you know, that's what my condo is in Florida. It's not very big, that's what I'll tell you. At thirty, three hundred dollars a foot, how much is that?
Three hundred thousand.
Yeah, is, and that's not affordable according to what people are paid in this community. It's not, it's just not, I mean.
I think at three hundred dollars a foot, that's some pretty high end fixtures in a house like that.
Is that high end?
I, I think a, a higher end house would cost three hundred dollars a foot.
Oh, my gosh, a thousand, a thousand square feet is pretty little.
Yeah.
It's pretty little, mm-hmm, although maybe we are, maybe our parents grew up in houses that size, my, my mom's house was little, but she grew up in.
Yeah.
None of us grew, none of us grew up in little houses. You'd be right on top of your sister or your brother, oh my gosh, you'd have killed him, Jim.
It's a bedroom, yeah.
Yeah. I didn't say a bedroom. Anyways.
My mother's family, they have three bedrooms for fourteen kids.
Yeah, and no one complained. So anyways.
They probably did at the time, but.
That, that was the end of, uh, yeah, that's what we talked about, so wa- watch for more things to come from, um, the news or from. Yeah, and Jason did apply for, oh, I think this is kind of exciting, Jason applied for a mini grant.
Ooh, I thought you were gonna say a new job.
No, a mini grant, um, from, I think it's through the community foundation. And it is, uh, yeah, the community foundation, I think, is running the money through the count, the county's giving, I don't know. Anyways, it's, that's how it went, and it's to pay for the wildflower project, um, on the highway.
Oh.
So, a third of a mile is gonna get planted in wildflower seeds to beautify the median.
And not have to worry about cutting the grass.
Correct, mm-hmm, so we'll see how it works, it's a three year project kinda thing.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it, I'm done.
Recreation. Recreation committee, uh, did not meet, they didn't have a quorum, um, well, they, they met, they didn't have a quorum, so no action was taken. Um, road committee, we met, uh, last night, yeah, last night, seems like longer than that ago. Um, talked about clear sight intersection, uh, some drainage issues in Trowbridge. Um. I don't think much else.
On Ontario, they took down the pass with care and do not pass signs, so Ontario will be double striped yellow. That's a road for something. Okay, that's great.
I went out there just to pass the car for the heck of it.
And you couldn't?
Yeah, I couldn't. There was a little space in there where I could.
Don't pass.
Planning and zoning report, the, uh. Cafe Bakery, which I don't think I'm still permitted to say what it is, um, there has been, like, Jason relayed that there's been some deliberation between the uh, developer and owner, um, over the square footage, so they've been kinda going back and forth, that's why there hasn't been much visible progress there. Um, so there's been some slight delays as far as the construction timeline, but it is moving forward. Um, and we have received a preliminary PUD application for the Forestville development that Linda was just talking about, so. There will be more on that very soon. Um, in addition, on that same note, I, as far as I understand it, and as far as I've seen, I would not call it mixed use, it's gonna be strictly residential, it's gonna be a mix of residential types though. Is how I would call it, um, they will have, as, as far as I, again, uh, am aware and have seen. Um, there will be some recreational amenities, but I, I, again, the mixed use, uh, I think we should be careful with cause I, we don't wanna give across the impression that there's gonna be businesses on this track, cause it's.
It's not, okay, cause I know Jason did say that before.
Oh.
So he must have changed it.
Right, uh, everything's still in flux, I mean, with the, the road, the interview, or the, excuse me, intersection issue. Um, and the road connectivity throughout the whole northwest section, um, in addition to this development and working with the road commission, working with the developer, everything's still moving, moving parts, so we're still figuring it out, so.
So are those lots? Specific size lots, like, I know where some people live, they have to have acre lots or five acre lots and we have ninety feet.
It's, I would say, still too early to tell that, although it is a PUD, and as we all know, the PUD one of the, I wouldn't say purpose, but one of the features of a PUD is you can kinda bypass the zoning requirements for that particular zone district that the parcel lies in. Um, so, there's, I would not say that the parcels, or the future parcels within the parent parcel are going to meet the minimum requirements as we lay them out in the zoning ordinance, cause it is gonna be a PUD, so.
So the article in that Man About Town or whatever it was, was that'll put in there that they're all gonna be condos, is kinda misleading?
I would agree with that.
Condo.
I would say, not, not traditional condos as far as attached or stacked on top of each other, more site condos.
Right, okay.
Which are basically lots.
Correct.
Right. Single family.
And then site condos, that's just a, a quick way to get about, get away from subdivisions. Much cheaper, much cheap, that's why they make condominiums, developers were bitching because the, the subdivision act is so onerous to them, they had to make, you know, sure everything was, was correct, so it's a lot quicker process, it's a lot less. The state does not get involved with a condominium, I believe, I think it's at the township level that a condominium's approved versus a subdivision which has to be approved by the state. And the state goes through it and, and, and bleeds red, red ink all over subdivision plans. Cause I've submitted subdivision plans two or three times to the state, and it's a long term process, a condominium can be banged out in six months. And I think that's, the state is out of a condominium, and it makes it a lot easier for a developer to make condominiums, and they can make lots, buildings, whatever they want. And call it a condominium, is that your understanding as well? Anyway, that's my understanding, it's a lot easier to make a condominium.
Is that what Swadley did in?
Sure, condominiums, yeah.
That's what Swadley did in there.
I, 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 I assume the condominiums, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and he, and his is a design bill, so he'd sell a condominium lot and he'd build a, a building on it, cause that was part of the deal, you buy the lot, I build your house.
Yeah, oh, they look very nice, I mean, it looks very nice.
And they do a lovely job.
Yeah.
You know, but it's just condominiums are, are, are less onerous in regulation to, to accomplish, that's basically.
Certainly not affordable housing from my perspective up there.
Isn't it because of wetlands mostly though, you don't have to provide wetlands with condo, with a condominium plan?
I think wetlands are still regulated by the DNR, you still can't mess with them. You know, and I think that, um, it's just that condominiums are just an easier way to go about it, you know, you have different rules, you have condominium bylaws, deeds, all that kinda stuff, there's that kinda legalese that's in there. But it is not regulated or it is not approved by the state, the state has no interest in condominiums other than there was a condominium act passed by the state. Condominiums are maybe to a county level or a township level, and that's as far as they go as far as approvals.
So when they have those condominium units up for, at the, for the area, you can't call them subdivision. Do they have to maintain the, uh, roads or sidewalks or?
Well, I think, see, see, you know, I, I think more, a developer doesn't wanna mess with a road. He, he will build a road to a county spec. So you can have a county road inside of a condominium. Lot, basically, you know, everybody thinks condominium, they can think of a building. A lot can be a condominium, except it has air, that's, that's, when you, when you define a condominium lot, you have so much air that you can occupy basically the height, height of the house, that's what you own, you own that height. And that, so that's part of that, but a condominium can be a lot, can be a building, can be a, a, a marina pier. We, I made a doc, we made a dock condominium once down in Sheboygan, on, on whatever river is down there, downstate. And it was for boats, but you, it was a, called a dock condominium, so you actually bought a condominium slip for your boat. So you can make a condominium into anything.
It's not just terminology that they've used, it's a workaround.
It is, it is, it's, it, it was just streamlined process, cause making a subdivision, it takes a long time and there's a lot of I's a dot, T's a cross, a lot of stuff you have to go through, you know, and a lot of approvals, that condominiums don't necessarily have to be approved, you know, so. It's just an easier way to develop, cause developers are screened, because it takes so long for the state to, you know, it, it's a year process for a subdivision, maybe even longer. You know, cause you gotta do a lot of work and, and the drawings are.
Work and money.
But.
Makes sense.
It's just easier, it's just, in a planned unit development, they made that because, you know, like, like even at the golf course, where it's one acre, minimal parcels. You know, one acre parcels off by the golf course, cause that's residential in the township, is one acre, which if you don't have water and sewer, maybe smaller. But when you do a pan, planned unit development, that goes out the window. So, zoning size doesn't matter anymore because you've approved their vision for what, I mean, you gotta make sure that it makes sense. But it's, it's a much easier way, cause you can't do spot zoning. You can't say, hey, I wanna make my, you know, ten acres, I wanna make that, you know, quarter acre lots, you know, you can't. Cause it's, you know, one acre zoning, but a planned unit development, you can put in quarter acre lots because it's not, you can get away with the, zoning doesn't apply anymore.
So that's what Vonks did?
Yes.
So, is any movement on that?
Yeah, they're starting the infrastructure, I see some big sewer pipe and some water line.
Okay, I was wondering.
I think they're gonna have to do some blasting in there, but there's some, there's some rock, I think.
Is there still rock in there?
I would guess they're gonna have to blast to get some of that water line in there.
I haven't been by there, so.
Yeah, they haven't been much, just, they moved some stuff in there. It's gonna take a while.
I thought they were gonna go faster.
Not, not, not at the price of ten bucks to do that for it or not.
Yeah, well, right, right, so that's what people are waiting for.
Yeah.
Didn't they have to get something with the city? They have something.
They have to have water, I think, I don't, I don't know what the deal is.
One little aspect.
The water comes from us, right?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I don't know.
No, I think it was the city.
The city's gonna provide water?
Yeah, cause it was in the city.
I think some of it's in the city, right?
Yeah, most of it's in the city.
Wow. Huh, well, then they have more hoops to jump then, we were easy.
We were easy.
Yeah, we were easy. Run that water line through the township and go around.
Anything more?
No.
Nope, that's it. Okay. Any announcements? Since there's no public comment here, I don't think we're gonna get any public comment. Additional comments by planning commissioners, Linda? Additional comments by planning commissioners, Linda?
Are you guys getting the township packet yet or not?
No.
So we still need to move that forward, township packets.
Tell them about the minutes?
Yep, well, the minutes and the whole packet, good meetings.
And from the Rock and Road Committee, too, we used to get those.
We don't get.
And we still haven't made any of those either, so.
Township packet, okay, I'll ask Randy to add you to the, however that works, or I'll just send it. You did get my little two thousand twenty-two gold, okay. Alright, otherwise no comments, thank you.
Bethany?
No comments.
Steven?
No, I'm outta gas.
I haven't, neither. Well, I guess we're adjourned at nine thirty-one.
Yeah.
Whoa, you earned your money.
Quick, quick over the top.
Yeah.
Earned your money tonight, huh?
That was a long one, though.